The time is four thirty P M. Pelican Rapids City Council meeting for March eighth, twenty twenty-two is called to order and ask those in our audience here at the chamber, council chambers, if not sign him, if you do so on the clipboard by the back door before you leave, and also ask everyone to put their cell phones on vibrate. Will call member Danielle?
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markoff.
Here.
And Councilmember Steve Thompson, after the mayor of Breck Street.
Here. Welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those in the council chair joining us by Zoom. And also remember, our city council meetings are on channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. Just a caveat to tonight's meeting, due to state statute, we have to be finished with our meeting by six P M. this evening. We have to be finished by six P M. for township day or townships meetings for us in the state of Minnesota. A few announcements in the next few weeks. First of all, I congratulate the Pelican Rapids boys basketball team, won the Hurdle Lakes Conference. There's a first round of playoffs are here this Thursday evening at seven P M. And if they win that game, the second round will also be here in Pelican Rapids on Saturday evening at seven P M. Also, this Saturday, remember, turn our clocks ahead. Daylight savings time begins Saturday, March twentieth, first day of spring. Our next council meeting is in three weeks, on Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, here at four thirty, next city council meeting. And some long range planning on the seventh of April, that's a Thursday, seventh of April, two P M. is the county local board review and equalization meeting here at city hall. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening for citizens comments, item number two, citizens comments? I see none. Item number three is agenda additions or deletions. I have one deletion, item number sixteen, a closed meeting, will delete item number sixteen. Any other additions or deletions?
Will you approve the agenda or the deletion?
Motion second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number four is the approval of consent agenda. I'll read those items. Item number four is approval of minutes for the council meeting of February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Four B is approval accounts payable listing. Four C one is financial report, which is in your packet, and four D is plumber registration twenty twenty-two Nicholas Green for green plumbing and heating. Is there a motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number five, police department, we have Chief Jeff Statham with us here this evening. His report is in the packet, but I think he also has something discussed regarding personnel. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We're kind of hopefully heading in the right direction, and what I'm requesting is a new police officer, full time, that's what we're requesting for. And if that's something going forward, that'd be great with our department.
Do we have any community part-time officers here?
One.
So this will eliminate a part-time position or just?
Well, the I.
You don't need an additional part-time employee now?
Well, once we have that full-time officer, that'll be, bring us up to five full-time police officers. So the other part-timer, it's gonna be very minimal, if any, so, but.
So you just will have one part-time officer on the whole side of the office?
Yep.
And then after them, if they want to, you can use related things and things like that.
Right. Yep.
Or six people.
Yep.
Does our current part-time officer have a job elsewhere, or does this only give?
No, we had one retire here in February, beginning of February, and she left, so now we just have one, one now.
But does that officer that rewed the part-time have a different job as well?
Yes. Yes. And I did speak with that person yesterday about things, and so.
Did we have somebody we could just bring in on, or do we have to?
Go through the whole process. Yep.
What's the length of the process if it goes smooth?
Smooth, oh, probably about a month plus. Usually works, you know, kind of depends, so.
Is our minister here? You're on board with us?
Yeah, Jeff and I talked about it, and the difficulty that we're finding is even though we have part-timers that have part-timers, because of part-time, they have full-time jobs, which is what we've been experiencing, and they're not giving us hardly any out, even though the one we have remaining, there'll be pay periods where he's not working at all. So the problem Jeff is running into is when you've got, he's got out of his paid vacation, he's got to run comp time, he's got doctors, friends, and sick days, or whatever, and there's, because none of them outside of the two new ones live in the city, getting them to come in and work is difficult. And so Jeff's still spending a lot of time in control, and the only way I think we're gonna get away from that, if that is the intent, and to have all the shifts covered, is by hiring up Jeff's full-time.
Motion second to approve the hire? Discussion?
I want to know. So last five full-time officers, I did three. So are we looking to eliminate the part-time altogether? If that's the case, who's gonna work when the other officer's sick? Who's gonna work while that officer burns the comp time and the officer recovering for the officer that's sick? Do you see the revolving circle I'm looking at?
Oh yeah, it's, you know, this is gonna add more comp time for the whole department, just having that person, so.
My question, I guess, is, is it our intent to carry no part-time? Doesn't really matter, they don't work, right?
Well, yeah, the only, the only thing is that, you know, when I talked to this person yesterday, I mentioned to him about, you know, it costs a lot of money just for keeping that person, even if they're, you know, just sitting there not putting in hours and things, so it gets to be kind of a, yeah, but that person would like to stay on, you know, those kind of things.
Well, you're planning what, you keep our, discussing it on, that is the end goal? If you need part-time rights entirely in town?
I don't, um, keeping an amount would be a good, I think, a good thing possibly, but, you know, there again, it's, that's my feeling, you know, it's, that person would be a kind of an asset to us at times, but then again, it's gonna be, how many hours are gonna be for that person? So it can be, it's kind of a tough situation.
I think, to answer your question, I think, still yet to be determined whether we need that part-time, because adding another full-time position, now we've got eight hours, and so Jeff's gonna have to take a look at, does he have enough time? Are the twelve-hour shifts gonna remain, or does he have to go to a different, basically a different type of work schedule? To be able to make sure that he's getting everything, eighty hours, eighty hours hand filling, you know, the time slot for vacation, and things, there's some things that he needs to look at. You know, the other option was to look at hiring more part-timers, but that's not getting them, because they're coming, and they have got full-time jobs, and they're still stuck, so.
Are there any questions? I have my.
Yeah, I wish I could, you know, it.
It's hard to solve, I guess.
Yeah. Like I said, this, yeah, this person is, they can be an asset when they're here, you know, it's just how much time is gonna be given is, you know, that's a big question, because of the other person's full-time job, they have to fill their, you know, and they're having trouble too, so it gets to be kind of a tough deal, but.
At some point, it's gonna have to be decided whether you keep a full-time part-time, because like you said, with both requirements and equipment and everything else, it's expensive to have a part-timer that's not working. So we need to go through that expense, or we just put you?
Is it possible to make a mandatory that they work excellent hours?
Not without, not without a union negotiation. You're not gonna be subjected to that, because I think it's, it would be great if we could have some minimal amount of hours that they have to provide for us, but we can't make them do that. Just like we can't make the options we have now living in the city, which is a problem. When they're living, you know, forty-five minutes away in the winter time, it becomes a problem, which can't make them do that.
Day more discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. And also, we should approve a police chief's report here, that someone elected a motion to. Second discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor and council, thank you.
Item number six is street report report, we have supervisor Brian O'Neal.
Yes, thank you. Short and sweet, winter should be about over, I'm hoping, but we, we have spent, again, majority of our time the last month plowing snow and then moving it. We finally actually caught up from the first snowfall we had. We finally got room now, snow's moved, so it has taken a while, but, and yes, I am well aware that the streets are in bad shape. We are, we are trying to work on those, sanding them, trying to peel them up. We need a little more sunlight, and it would go a long ways, but they are bad, we are working on them, along with trying to get water to run in our storm drain system downtown and everywhere right now, so it has, it hasn't been fun, but we are aware of it and are working on it, so. Did happen to have another, much smaller water leak down at the wastewater plant in one, in their main line going out of the administration building down there. Were able to figure out what it was and temporarily figure out what we can do until it warms the, there's a lot of stuff in the ground down there, and with frosts and digging, we chose that it would be better to valve it off until it thaws and we can go in there and not have the fear of hitting wires and everything else. Got great word yesterday on our new plow truck. We ordered that thing one year ago today, you guys approved that truck. It finally got the chassis in January, it went over to Burt's to get outfitted with a box and lift and plows and such. Talked to him yesterday, April, probably May, but he will guarantee we'll have it by next fall for plowing. They're having trouble getting stainless steel, evidently, it's the new thing, so, but I did touch base with that, because I'm looking for it, kind of to use it, but not coming, so. As far as the parts go, scanning rink is still open, will remain open until temperatures decide to not let it be open, so. You know, it's, it's up and down. I really questioned it this year, whether, I'll get the final tally here at the end of the year, but it doesn't seem as, as much as it used to be. And even since last year, we weren't even open, but it seemed like there was more kids out last year than, than people in general, so.
It's so windy and so cold.
It has been. It has been very brutal, yep, and.
The last one, I wanted to do.
Right, right, and, and one of the things we're gonna have to also look at is possibly location for that. With the school redoing their parking lots, we won't be able to set up as we do there on asphalt, and it's not, obviously, you don't want water sitting on asphalt anyway, so. I have a feeling, I haven't had a conversation with Trevor about that, but I do have a feeling that that'll be coming down, that they might wanna look at getting a different location for it, so, but we'll cross that path when it comes. Any questions?
Any questions, Governor? Is there a motion to approve his report? Or move second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item number seven is northwest city land development, there was a newspaper that was put on your desk this evening.
Sorry, I just heard applause.
Mr. Raymond Redding, and he's with us this evening, he's a developer and also a real estate agent of Detroit Lakes, so I'm gonna let Don take off of the discussion on this, how it all began, and why Raymond is actually here this evening.
Yeah, I'll let Raymond introduce himself and share his story in a second, in a minute, but about, I don't know, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, something like that, the mayor and I were contacted by a realtor from the community, Ariana, and she wanted to set up a meeting to meet with her and Mr. Redding, and so we did, and in that meeting, we talked about need for housing, obviously everywhere, but in Pelican Rapids, and, you know, we talked a little bit about potential projects in Pelican, these still lots, some of the other areas of the community that potentially could, you know, look at doing some development, and when, when they left the meeting, basically, I think Ariana and Mr. Redding drove around and made looks at northwest, I don't know, you might want other locations in the city too, as they looked at that northwest property, and then he contacted me again and said that, that northwest was really interesting to him, and he would like to have some discussions with the city about potentially partnering up and doing some housing up there, and so with that, if Raymond wants to jump in front of the microphone, and I guess share a little bit more about yourself and what you got, what you're thinking.
Yeah, thanks a lot, nice meeting you, council, thanks for having me here tonight. So, yeah, we met and stuff and went through some options in the city. When I toured your city, I'm, I'm from Holly originally, so I grew up, you guys were a rival back in the day, but it's all good, you guys won the conference, so it's a good thing for basketball. But anyways, with that being said, I work in smaller communities, so I own two developments in Holly right now, in the rural area, then I also help manage with the Olsons family, R and H Properties, Prairie Hills Estates in town. And so we really focus on having that staple place where it, everyone's proud to go there, and we have continuity in the development, and I've learned a lot from my past experiences working up in Fargo, I've worked with Steve Stoner, that owns all the Woodhaven developments, I still help out Pro Offit with their, with the Horizon Shores developments currently and stuff like that, so I got a lot of background in developing and managing developments itself, and set it up for just a long-term growth aspect, but in Holly, we take pride in not having a cookie cutter. So when you drive through there, and drive through there sometime, you'll, you'll see it, versus then drive through, drive through Glendon, drive through Dilworth, drive through Barnes, we'll drive through all of them, and you'll see what we've done there, and I think you'll be pretty impressed with it. We try to keep it so it isn't cookie cutters, you have the same house over and over and over and over and over again, you know, and having that aesthetic pleasant, and then try to balance it out too, where we have certain price homes in certain areas and stuff like that, so if somebody that comes in and wants to upgrade their home in your community and build maybe half million dollar house, they are not right next to a twin home based at two hundred thousand, you know, to hurt their values for future. So we try to strategically plan those things in place, but that's the one thing I see in, like, in your community, what other communities don't have is just a new development, you know, a place for people that maybe have been here for several years and have a used home that wanna upgrade and have that opportunity to do that, you know, and I think that northwest property out there, the land, has a lot of opportunities with the role in topography. I do a lot of lookout foundations, a lot of walkout elevations to help out and give some variety for people and clientele and stuff like that. But that's the one thing I see in touring your city and stuff and going through it, and obviously, I haven't been here quite a bit, you know, in the past too, and just not having, you know, a place for new construction. Really, I drove around and, you know, we couldn't find anything to have an opportunity to even build a few, you know, here and there. So I feel there's a need for it, and I'm willing to take some risk with that too and help out. What I have experienced with in the past, like I said, I've kinda explained some of my experiences, what I have, I also own two developments in Detroit Lakes too, so what we do, it doesn't matter where I'm at, we piecemeal it, so we take one street at a time, develop that, add another street, you slowly progress into it, you don't go in gangbusters and do the whole thing in one shot, you know what I mean, to have all that overhead, so everybody's at risk, you know what I mean? I'm trying to do something, if we work together, where we work together as a team on it, and piecemeal it together, you know, so it all comes in the continuity. And to add on to that, I did see what you've done out there with the apartment building, it's a beautiful apartment building along one oh eight, it is, it looks great, you know, and I think that would tie in nice, and it looks like you have that stormwater retention pond, then to the west of that, in that lower end, along one oh eight, and to me, what I felt would be nice out there is somewhat of a walking path or bike path anyways to go along there to what would be a future development out there and have a park setting there, so when you drive on one oh eight and you're coming into town, it has some nice aesthetics, looks beautiful, and welcome to Pelican, you know? I think it's got a lot of potential, and that's basically where I'm at right now, I guess I'm here tonight too, to see, and if you do decide that you do wanna work together, I'm open to ideas and suggestions myself, but I also have my own ideas and suggestions that would work for me also, to kind of work together and take risks myself doing it, but again, my approach here is to work together as a team on it, you know, too, but I'm willing to take over the financial risk, take over the development, and I'd like to manage it all, you know, being that, that part of it. I've had trouble in the past where I've worked in Detroit Lakes where I wasn't the sole owner, and he let some real low, low, low-end builders come in, and they weren't managed properly, the covenants weren't in place, and there was trash everywhere, there was, and it just don't work. I have strict covenants in place, and I make sure that the properties are clean, and it's a, it's a place that people are proud to come home to, you know, and that's where I, my approach would be with it, you know, if you decided that you would be willing to work with me. Any questions that you folks have about me or my past or experience?
What are the places you've done before, you, Holly, what else?
Yep, in Holly, we have Prairie Hills Estates, we have Bison Ridge Estates, we have Lake Mariah Estates, and I help for the stormwater management, I'm certified as a SWIP planner, designer, and installer with BMP products for Minnesota, I work with the EPA and the MPCA on making sure that the developments are managed properly for environmental concerns, so I'm licensed and registered to do that too, so I help that part out with Pro Offit for all the Horizon Shores developments in Moorhead. And I've helped Steve Stoner out with all the Woodhaven developments too with that, and that's where I've learned a lot of my experiences from Steve saying, no, don't do the whole development, one street at a time, and that's in downtown Fargo, where it's big, you know what I mean, so I, he's just a good guy, who's, you know, learned a lot from him, and I kind of took his philosophy and his experience and his vast knowledge into what I'm doing today, you know, so. And then in Detroit Lakes, I own Long Pine Estates and Clear Creek Estates.
Raymond, at this point, have you made contact with Apex Engineering?
Yep. Yep, I have made contact, I work with Apex for my developments in Detroit Lakes, in Holly area, Clay County area, I work more with Moore Engineering, but they're both good engineering firms, just different parameters that they work in, but I'm willing to spend the money for myself to, if you guys, if we work together, where I would spend the money to create a plan for that development, and, and I'd be looking at some multi-housing stuff to kind of keep it segregated, maybe with the other two units you have on the north end towards the turkey plant, and keeping that continuity with that, and going off the single families on this end and kind of growing with and phasing into some twin homes into that. So it's kind of, and that's what I've done in Detroit Lakes too, and it's worked really well to keep that, and it's worked well for selling homes and stuff and keeping that resale value, and having that when you pull in the development, it looks consistent, you know?
So one of the things that I, I put in front of you guys, and I actually emailed it out to see, had it prior to the meeting, so you could think this over, was Raymond had, had provided us when we, when we met for, at the meeting a little later, he sent us a proposal, this is just a kind of a first draft of something, what was going through his mind that might, that he'd like to basically have the city council look at, and I believe from our discussions on it, is just a first draft of it, it's his thoughts, and just wanna get your thoughts on it, on the different aspects of it, or things that you think are considerable, and some things that you may not be open to, that type of a thing, but hopefully you've all had a chance to read it, but is there any questions on that, or do you wanna go through it? Really, it's really just talking about basically, cause he described kind of his overall vision about there as far as some single families, some maybe multi-family unit, but it's really, his proposal is really in paragraphs three and four, this kind of nuts and bolts of it. Do you wanna go through that? Just to give them an idea, or give us an idea of what you guys are willing to entertain, or do you want to have something more formal put together? I think at the end of this meeting, I'm talking to Raymond, what we'd like to do by end of this meeting is know, are we gonna start drafting something up that the city council can officially maybe take into consideration on at the end of the month meeting, or how far are you willing to go with it? Am I right there, Raymond?
Yeah, a hundred percent right, and again, this is, you know, again, a stepping stone of us, if, for me, this is a long-term relationship, this is no coming in five years and we're done out of here, this is, I, I mean, what I've been averaging in these smaller communities is probably three to five builds a year, to be straight up with you, you know, about three to five homes a year, that's what it takes, and that's why you don't do the whole thing at once, you do a street, you know, and you phase it, and you keep adding to it, and you keep growing, you know what I mean? But for me, I'm looking at a long-term, really long-term here, you know what I mean? And that's where, that's where my heart's at with it, I, again, I like smaller communities, I don't like big communities, and I've got a lot of experience in it, and I, I think it could work well here.
How many acres is it?
I think there's approximately sixteen, that's how you develop.
Yep, I think so, that's what you're saying, yeah.
That's all that, at that point. And you wanna take on the whole sixty acres?
Correct, for future, for planning, the worst thing that would happen to me, as me taking the risk and coming in and developing, number one, I put a spec home out and say it sits over a year, and I eat oats on it, you know what I mean? So that's something I was gonna talk about too, is, you know, if we could work together as a team, or work together maybe with a local bank here, you know, I have a lot of other banks I work with, and they're fine with it too, but to have it where I've worked with the owners of Prairie Hills Estates in Holly, and we have a cap on that interest, so we have a cap, so our ten thousand dollars is capped, you know, because they're willing to take a risk, because they were selling no homes in Prairie Hills, I came in and worked with them, because I grew up with them, we worked together as a team, and I got it where we're averaging five homes a year after we started working together, because I, my game plan I have in place does work. So if the city or a local bank, or we can work together and say, okay, we'll do a spec house, but we're gonna keep it below this price point, you gotta be sustainable, you know what I mean? And find something that fits that sweet spot here where people can afford it, and that's where Ariana has good experience on it and things like that, of keeping that three fifty, three hundred fifty thousand or less price point is where we'd have to be for a focal point, because we don't wanna build, I, I mean, I, I just don't build real, real low-end stuff, like, I'm not gonna use names, up in Moorhead and stuff where they have wood foundations and splitting unit ACs and floating slabs instead of four-foot frost walls, I just, that's a garage, you know what I mean, I just don't do it, all the, I tell you, all the building inspectors don't recommend it, you know, I meet with them all the time, the building officials, I belong to the Home Builders Association, I'm a board member for them, and, you know, I don't do that, I build a quality product, you know, I'm not in here to build a bunch of junk and leave, you know? So that's where I was at for that part, but again, for me, it's a stepping stone for us to work together and find something that works for both of us, you know, and I'm not coming in saying, this is the way it's gotta be, or else I'm not, that's not where my heart's at with it. And I'm finding a lot of stuff I put in here is things that have, that I work with, with the city of Detroit Lakes, is similar situations, similar parameters that they have in their ordinances, that has worked well for them, you know, and it's worked well for both of us working together, yeah.
Do you think we have the kind of demand that you're used to, Detroit Lakes and Holly?
Not Detroit Lakes, for sure not. Holly, yes. Yeah, those smaller communities, yes. Yeah, 'cause what I see here, and this is how I feel, and how I feel could be wrong, so you guys live here, you know your community better than I do, but how I feel is there's no opportunities for people that have bought homes, say, ten years ago, seven years ago, where it's a good family home, but they've got the money. You know, and it's worked well for both of us working together. Yeah.
Do you think we have the kind of demand that you're used to?
Not Detroit Lakes for sure not. Holly, yes. Yeah, those smaller communities, yes. Yeah, because what I see here, and this is how I feel and how I feel could be wrong. So you guys live here, you know your community better than I do. But how I feel is there's no opportunities for people that have bought homes, say ten years ago, seven years ago. Where it, it's a good family home, but they've got the money and worth all to get a new home and upgrade. And had their, their families have expanded or whatnot. And then what that does opens up their previous home for younger families to come in and then take those beginning homes in and fill those voids. You know what I mean? So it's a kind of a rolling effect. And when we did it in Holly, when they did the Prairie Hills Estates in town, we did the first street that came in, it sold out like that. Because you had all these people like I'm talking about that really want to try to upgrade. You know what I mean? And have some opportunities, but there's nowhere around here to do it. And they don't want to live in the country. They want to be in town for their kids to ride bike to school and do all that, you know? I mean, that's how I feel. Now again, how I feel could be wrong. You guys know your community and the people here better than I do, so.
You have a question?
Well, I'm really, this is really interesting. I'm quite sure I didn't say it.
Do you guys want to kind of go through and, and pick out some of the, some of the proposal and just, you know, hear your thoughts on it? Whether that's something, you know, we, we want, we want to think about doing or, or do you want to start there? Like I said, you guys, if, if you've read it and want to comment on any of the, or have questions on any of his proposal, the specifics of it, we can go over it, you know, bring them up or else I can just kind of go through them. And see if there's any questions or comments or if Raymond wants to elaborate. Do you want to do that? Alright. Alright, I'm going to just kind of start in paragraph three here. Raymond, you got a copy of this?
Yeah, I do, I do right here. Yep, yep, yep.
The first one is basically what she kind of alluded to, getting the whole property. You know, the whole sixty acres basically for a dollar. And he talks about ensuring that there's no current specials on that. And there isn't any specials on that property out there. So that'd be the first thing. And I think he kind of alluded to, the reason for that is basically to, to kind of build out in phases and protect the investment that he already has there, knowing that he's able to continue on as things go in.
Yep.
What would be, I got a question regarding that. What would be the, the downside of, of starting with ten or fifteen acres?
Well, there would, the only downside for me then is I have no protection for future on what's neighboring there. And that could kill me. You know what I mean? And again, I've seen it. You know what I mean? Where maybe you're doing some of those apartments and up by the, by the Turkey Plant instead of the nice one there. And they get put in right next to a gentleman I just built for that has built a half million dollar house. That this is going to be a premier spot to go to. You know, it's happened in South Fargo to me at the pines of the district too, when I built down there. And this one guy built a million dollar home down there and they didn't tell him that what's going to be neighboring. And he, oh man, I'm telling you, I don't even know, he maybe took him to court. I don't know. He was so upset. You know what I mean? So that's what I'm trying to do. And that's why if I have the management of it, I can create it to protect those assets and people investing in that. You know, and that's my heart in with it. But my heart in with this too is to do it in little phases and say something happens, you know? I give it back to you guys for the same dollar. You know what I mean? We all work together as a team and it's written legally up like that. I'm not out to do it to get an edge and be out of here. I'm out to do it so for your protection, I think we do something like that too. Again, my heart is in it to us to work together.
We kind of talked about that when we were looking at this and thinking about proposal how and other projects that the city has done out there with the land that we own. That was in the agreement that if should something change in the future where he decides not to develop any further or things just aren't going according to plan, that the underfelt remaining, uh, you know, basically reverse back to the city. So that's, you know, he's fine with that part of it. No, we don't have to consider about any unpaid uh, infrastructure put in that, you know, and that, that would have to be looked into it somewhere too, obviously, but so kind of continuing on then, uh, he talks about putting, putting in place a ten percent down payment for the improvements created and having the remaining balance carried over special assessment. And that, that has to go to do with, you know, obviously if we're going to do a block at a time or whatever, that water sewer and streets, curb gutter, everything is going to have to be put in and typically, uh, that's city infrastructure. So we would basically go out, uh, get the money, uh, bid out the project, put, get it all in place and everything. And then based on what he's saying here, is he would provide ten percent of that down, that cost down. And the rest of it would be just accessible to, um, the properties. That's what we've done on everybody. Whether it was the Southeast Silver Project or, you know, the apartment project the city putting water sewer street in and then eventually, um, that gets put in based on the design of the plan. Eventually the city basically takes it over as part of the maintenance end of it, but they're assessed on, on, on the infrastructure that's put in place.
Correct.
And then the way it's assessed would basically be, that's one of the things we talked about that, that he shared too is our assessment policy is a little bit different than what they, what he typically does. Instead of doing it by a front footage basis, like we always do in our assessment policy, doing it on a per lot basis. And there isn't any, you know, we have a policy, but, but it can be basically deviated from, I believe, in that agreement if it gets us housing. And, and, and something that both, uh, the developer and the, and the city is, is, um, okay with. To get it, to get something going on it, so. And then the special assessments that we talked about, um, you know, basically setting, setting the special assessments up for deferrals for five years or whatever the timeframe is that we talked about. But if, if one of those lots in, in that, that section basically starts develop, gets getting, gets start, you know, developing by putting a house on it, then those basically assessments would kick in. Keeping in mind also that if the timing of this goes, according to where we like to see it go, there's always that tax abatement also that we do on property taxes and stuff that would also kick in on these people that apply for that, that program through the city. So there's a lot of incentives for, whether it's the deferments to the developer or it's whether it's tax abatement for property owners to start looking at buying lots and putting houses on it. Soon and later before that, that program goes away. Then he puts in here that the, the city would be willing to cover fifty percent of the stormwater infrastructure uh, and planning costs. And I think that has to do with, you can, correct me if I'm wrong when we were talking about, it had more to do with, um, obviously we're going to have to put water sewer or curb and gutter out there, manage where the flow of water goes and catch basin and that type of thing. So he's just asking that the city was sharing that cost, put the stormwater stuff in.
Yeah, I can expand on that too. So it's basically identical to what the city of Detroit Lakes does. And they have this down to size. And it's really not a big, big cost in it. You know what I mean? It's just the city showing good faith effort for that stormwater part of it. And I can get you a copy of my last one we just did here for my last phase for my Long Pine Development and show you. You know what I mean? Show you the numbers so you see everything. You know, there's nothing hidden. You know, everything's transparent, so. And you can see what they do. And it's not, it's not a real big cost in the whole thing, but it's a good faith effort and we're working together, so.
And then he also just to kind of make it, um, a little bit more inviting, um, area too, that anytime a block gets created upon, the city would provide a boulevard tree. And put in the boulevard, we have a little bit of trees and shade and stuff like that also just to make it more appealing.
That's just one tree per homeowner, you know, kind of thing. And then, then to go back to what you talked about, the wonderful, um, tax abatements that you have and incentives you have for new, you know, consumers coming in to build in your community is awesome. I never take that stuff. No, 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 no. That's for them. That's our marketing strategy to get them in your community. You know what I mean? That's the biggest thing. And that's what I market hard on. Is hey, you're going to come in for three to four years without any taxes. You know what I mean? Find something better anywhere else. You know what I mean? It's going to be hard, you know, locality here being close to Fergus Falls, Detroit Lakes. You still within community distance to Fargo, Purim. You know, you're in a good centralized area, great brand new school. That's my job, marketing. You know what I mean? And getting after it to get people here, but having that opportunities are huge. And I always save that for the purpose of them coming in. Yeah, just so you know too.
And the last thing on, on the fourth paragraph, last thing is basically that those special assessments would be, uh, done over a twenty year period, uh, interest rate of four percent or less. And I shared with him that actually I think the last project that we did, because prices are getting so high to put this infrastructure in, the assessments are getting, um, almost unrealistic. Uh, at a twenty year term, I mean, I think we've done, we, what we've done is as far as twenty, I know we've done fifteen. We may have done a twenty recently. I can't recall, but you know, it's something, basically, uh, we can, when we put that infrastructure in, we can put the time period in which we finance it too. So for the twenty year assessment isn't necessarily something that we wouldn't want to consider, especially with the cost to put the infrastructure in nowadays. And then the four percent interest rate or less. What I shared with him is typically what the city has done in the past when we put infrastructure in and we had the bond pool or whatever. We just basically, uh, always charge about one percent above what that, what we got the money for to finance the project. And with interest rates being as low as they've been, it's typically we, we finance them around, you know, two percent. If we PFA finance that type of a thing. But I also said with inflation and where interest rates are going, it's really hard to commit to something like that. But it can be looked at on a, on a case by case basis as it develops and out. If, if less than four percent, the city would always charge, um, one percent typically over one, one and a half percent over what we get the money for just for administrative costs. Um, and partly because, you know, a lot of those projects were also, they might be, they might be tip projects. Where we have tip reporting to do some of the more administrative expense. But, um, if there's no tip and there's no tax abatement financing tied to it, there's not as much administrative for us, so. So, and, and in talking with Raymond too, he's not looking for tax abatement for the project. He's not looking for taxes to finance a project. Which is, is targeted, I think, essentially too, but, um, so.
So God, if we, if we move forward this, this evening to work with Mr. Riddick and the land, then there's an agreement that's to draw up?
Yeah, we would have to start, if we want to move forward with, with getting things moving. Um, it would start by basically have us work with, uh, the city attorney, whoever, start putting a developer agreement together. And that would kind of, that's why I wanted to kind of share some of this stuff in the proposal to see what council is saying. Yeah, we can think about that or yeah, we can do that or no, we don't want to do that or whatever. So we have some idea and ultimately do we want to start drafting up a developer agreement?
And my thoughts too on the twenty year and the interest rate thing, I completely agree with you. And we can work together, what I was feeling as a team on that too, so we can look at what the total is. And we can calculate that all over those lots and figure out what the term would be of a fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty year term off the interest rate of prime plus one percent, whatever that is. Because it's probably lower than that four at that time, but it could increase. So we just, each phase we take as it would come along, you know what I mean? So then we can decide as a team on that too, to make it so it's a palatable thing for the consumer coming in. So there's not, so it's like, oh, well, it's completely other ballpark. They can't even handle the payment. I mean, they ain't going to help none of us out. You know what I mean? And that's where I had it kind of on that graduated scale, maybe, you know, thinking that way instead.
Commander, obviously, you know, the fact that basically it involves of the city basically turning land over, selling land or whatever, it does have to go through the planning commission. And I know at one point you had talked about the plan, so, um, you know, thinking a little bit or having a little bit of discussion on the plan for that development or that area out there. How do you see going forward with that? Because do, do you want to try and put a preliminary plan for how you might lay it out out there prior to, um, the council saying, going through with the act, uh, you know, the, the, the land exchange?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would be open to this. I mean, I'm going to have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars to work with Apex to create a plan. You know what I mean? And all I'm here for today is say, okay, are you guys going to work with me or not? So because if I have an uphill battle and it isn't even worth it, well, I'm not going to spend my money and energy in that one. I don't even have to do this, you know, so.
I'm very interested in what you're proposing here because we've talked about housing at different times and um, getting this last apartment in here was just a blessing because we finally it was a successful project and it worked out very well, but we also, we realize that we need individual homes. And, um, could you just step us through what one of your, one of these projects that you listed, I don't know, third, or Long Pine?
Yep.
And give us, you know, when you started on it, the steps, the steps you did and when, when things happened and how things happened and just kind of explain that process to us.
Absolutely. I can definitely do that for you. Okay, so I'll give you the most recent one in Detroit Lakes is Long Pine Estates. So it's the land between Walmart and Long Lake itself, okay? So I own all the land everywhere over there. I own all that property. So we've done it in phases with the same thing there. Even though I knew it was going to be hot, I still did it in phases. Because when we do it in phases, I don't have to go through all that again. I'll go back to your point. I apologize. I'm going off a tangent. Um, basically, uh, what we do is we meet with city council, we go through with our proposal. I have to spend the money with Apex to create a plan in place to lay out, uh, what we're proposing for a development itself. So for, and how each of the phases are going to work and how it's going to play out in the first phase and also in a holistic plan. Okay, and that's what we come bring to the council here. Bring it to the planning commission, bring it to city council. Everyone's got to go through and approve it first, you know, I mean, before you go through that. And you can approve the preliminary and then you have to approve the final, right? Am I correct in saying that? That's how you guys would do it here too? Okay, so that's the process we go with that. Once they do that and we get to the final of say the first phase and everybody approves it here and the city council agrees, then we send it out for bids. Then it goes out for bids and it goes out and a bunch of people, underground people bid on it. We go through and open the bids up. Everyone goes through it, finds the best. I probably already know who's going to win it, so I know who's getting, because they do most of my work for, they always get the bids, it seems like. So anyways, they're pretty aggressive on it. So we go through the bids, we figure that stuff out, hire them. And then, um, Apex takes care of all that though, for you folks. They represent you. They're your engineers. You know what I mean? So they handle that, give you the advice from all their experience and they got a ton of experience. So they'll go through, lay it out and then they don't pay him. I don't believe it till the end. You have to talk to Apex about this. They know better than I do. But I have to put my ten percent down right away. Right when it was final, I got to give you my money. You know what I mean? So, and then they also do have, I'll just tell you, to protect you guys too, they do have a park dedication fee, which is six percent of the assessed value off the part you're developing. So it's not a ton of money, but it's a little bit because for me, I want this to be aesthetically pleasant out there. So I want, you know, some, if you guys have a park board or something like that where we can work together. It doesn't mean you have to be crazy, crazy extravagant, but maybe a walking path in a green area. Maybe the Eagle Scouts can build a picnic shelter or something. And you know what I'm getting at? Just to have that green space and stuff like that and kind of a, a continuation, maybe the park board here has a plan in place for like a walking path or whatever. But that's kind of the steps. Does that answer your question about the steps that take place for that?
But I would also like to know kind of the timeline.
Okay.
You know, like this last project you talked, Long Pine? When did you start that? When did the first house get built? When did the first house get sold?
Yep.
When did you go on to the second one?
Gotcha. Okay, I can handle that then. Okay, so basically I started in, it would be early fall and stuff for this last phase here. And now I'll implement it in probably June or the underground work will start. So the planning commission approved it and now it goes to the city council this next month. And then they'll get, everything's been, no one's fought it or nothing. It's been fine. You know what I mean? And then they'll prove the bids and then they'll start probably in June, it sounds like, from the engineers. So then the last phase I did in Detroit Lakes, it was the same kind of situation. So you have about working with the city and folks, probably that six to nine month timeframe of getting it finalized to start the construction, the earth moving part, okay? About six to nine months. You know, to go through all your council meetings and stuff like that and get approved and send it out for bids. So once they start, and we, they let me start building homes there before the, before it's finished, the streets are finished, I'm moving. You know what I mean? I'm getting stuff in the ground. And so the last phase we did, we did on Village Lane South. I've, this is year one and I pretty much got it built out, but last year was a crazy year though, you know? The first phase for there, I had sixteen lots. It took me two and a half years and I built that one out. I built it all completely, sold it all out in two and a half years. But that's Detroit Lakes. That's what I'm saying.
That's also the area right, was it south and west of the airport?
Yes, a hundred percent accurate, yes. Yep, and but that's again Detroit Lakes, so that's why I'm bringing to reality here. We're in Pelican. We're like a Holly, you know what I mean? So that's what I'm saying. If we're realistic, I would have a goal, my goal here would be to move three to five homes. You know what I mean? So I would create a phase of no more than probably fifteen lots, fifteen, sixteen lots, max, max. Okay? And so, and for marketing purposes, it works better that way too, because people are like, oh, we only got sixteen lots to choose from. We better hop on it. You know what I mean? Well, these prices are here and it, it works. You know, versus if you do like in Glendon, you go drive through there. He did that whole dang development and it sits there eating oats. You know what I mean? Because people are in no hurry. You go in there, you got forty some lots to choose from. You know, it doesn't look very good either. You don't have a lot of activity. And that's where I bring to the table, because I'm also a builder and realtor. So we'll be building as we go. And you see activity, that's attracts. Activity attracts. And that's what I bring to the table too, you know, having that implementation of a builder, developer and realtor. You know what I mean? builder, developer, and realtor, you know what I mean? And I work very well with all your local realtors, and they're gonna be on my forefront of being your salespeople, you know? So.
Again, the question for Raymond. So, I'm not sure if Raymond or Don, but didn't we approve a zone along, or zone, commercial zone along 101st?
You guys, you guys accepted that plan that West Central Initiative worked with the planning commission on? You guys put something together and presented to the city council? And I know it was zone, it's zone commercial along.
I think you're right.
Yeah, correct, we approved that, do we have to rezone that? I don't, I, when you went through that process and then they presented it to the, to the planning commission for the council, I have to go back and look, but I, I don't, I know it didn't go through, quick if I'm wrong, didn't go through the public hearing process and all that stuff, did it? To officially get set, the zoning gets set in place, I think it was more of a, here's a recommendation of what we came up with would be good for that area, and the next steps would have been possibly to start having public hearings and setting that zoning in place, I could be wrong.
But I did see the map you're talking about, that shows it, you know what I mean? I did.
Recommendation based on the technical direction and facilitation that West Central Initiative did with the planning commission to give that an idea of what it could look like up there, and that's what you guys came up with. Whether it's set in stone, I, I'd have to go back and look, but I.
I mean, I know it was presented and we approved it.
I remember approving it, I don't know, like you said, if it ever went to public hearing.
Right, just to get that zoning set in place, it begins with the public hearings and all that stuff through the planning commission. And again, and again, you know, Raymond saw all that stuff and taking into account what he's got there, or what he's thinking about for his phases would have to be something that we want to look at, because that zoning might have to change.
Yep, I agree.
So you wouldn't be interested if that zoning didn't change if we had that frontage?
No, because I don't think it would be best for the whole development. I think for me, my foresight, and this is how I feel about it, is when I'm driving down 101, and I'm gonna turn and go into my home and I have this premier development here, I'm gonna have signs and everything lit up, it's gonna look nice. And I don't want a bunch of, a bunch of multi-housing, you know what I mean? I gotta drive through that to get to my nice $400,000 to $500,000 house, you know what I mean? I would rather have those future growths be back towards where you had the, the turkey plant at and keep all that up in that area for the multifamily. So you kind of keep it, so you have a park or green space along 101 that's beautiful to drive by, you know what I mean? That's my thought process.
I didn't so much mean like multi-housing.
Okay.
I mean like, you know, quality gas station, J C gas.
Yeah.
Because the one thing I've been told on the city, the city representative, multiple times, I just never had an answer for anybody, is you can't get gas in this town unless you're going south.
Oh, I see your point.
You know what I mean?
We gotta be out here by five, six o'clock.
Okay, but I, I do hear what you're saying, and see for, I felt that you already had so many gas stations down here, so I did think a little bit about what you're saying to maybe having that opportunity, and, and to know that maybe it could be an option that we could discuss, you know what I mean? So. Yeah.
So. Don, if we agree to this, what would be the, what would the motion say?
Well, you know, I guess, do we want to start working, in the mother city, did you basically present somewhat of a concept plan to the, to the councils first, before you started working on developer agreement, or do you do them simultaneously, or how did you do that?
It was a little different, because I already knew it, and, you know what I mean? I knew the city was gonna be on board with it, working with me, so I didn't have to worry about, you know what I'm saying? But for me, I just didn't want to spend thousands and thousands of dollars working with Apex, creating a plan for your city, and I'm, I'm out, you know what I mean? So that's why, for me, I would just want maybe an agreement that you guys are willing to work with me on it? I'm willing to take the risk and do, you know what I mean, is what I'm getting at? I just want to know that the things that I lay in here, is that something that seems feasible, doesn't have to be guaranteed, but something that, you know, where the hearts are at of working together as a team and approach on it, you know what I'm saying? So.
Was there any aspects of this that you guys really focused on?
I, I personally, I feel we absolutely need more discussion on this with you.
Mm-hmm.
This all, you know, it all sounds great, I think it requires more, not having to be done by cities.
Yeah, I agree, no argument, yep, this is step one.
So then maybe the thing to do.
Maybe the thing to do then is for the council to take action, approving, you know, need to start working out with Raymond and the city attorney, what a developer agreement would look like for the council to consider, if you want to do that.
I have, I have, I mean, I'm on the record saying that the last thing the city needs to be is in the real estate business. I'm off it, I could care less, I'm off it, we pay him a dollar to take the land. My only concern is putting all our eggs in one basket, with one, he comes in and says, we want to put a, whatever, that's, and that, I can probably be convinced on that, but that's my only concern.
Yeah, I respect your position on that.
Putting all my, all our eggs at the city in one basket, one developer taking over a whole 60 acre block.
There would be a lot of people knocking on the door.
Yeah, no, and I respect your position on that too, I do, because I know what your heart's at with it, yep.
And maybe part of that agreement could, could address, you know, that, that aspect of it. I mean, I understand his position of not wanting to take on 30 acres and have some guy come in and put a.
Who knows what?
A campground.
Yeah, exact, 100% accurate. Yeah, and that's, that's where I'm at, and that's why I'm willing to like, hey, I'll give it back to you guys for a buck if this don't work, you know? Take one street at a time kind of methodology, working together and stuff, and, yeah.
Don, what would you, what would you say the motion should read?
I, I think it's somewhere along the lines of, of, you know, me working with Raymond and the city attorney to draft up an agreement that we'd like to share with the city council and see if they are willing to approve it or not.
I'll make that motion, I'll move that we direct Don to work with Raymond and the city attorney to come up with an agreement.
Motion second, discussion, discussion.
Raymond, you're an excellent salesperson.
Well, I'm, it's just the facts.
No.
Yeah, it is, it's just the facts, so.
Dave, have a, have a question.
Yeah, if I would, you know, I'm listening, it sounds very good, and it sounds like something we need, but.
David, could you address?
In your other, in your other developments, as a first time meeting, has cities asked you to look at your financial statement, have they said, do you have the means to pull this off? In other words, if we give you property for a dollar, do you have the ability to pull this off? Do other cities ask you to show that?
They have not, and the reason, I suppose, because they know me, you know what I mean? And you're welcome to talk to any of my banks if you want to, I have nothing to hide, so.
No, no.
Yeah, for sure, you know?
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor, say if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Thank you, Raymond.
Yeah, you're welcome, thanks for your time, appreciate it. Yep, yep, yep.
Item number eight, park board, I'm Kate Martinez.
Oh, Lord.
Sorry about the, we got too much, I don't have time.
Hey, everybody, Kate Martinez, I'm here representing the park board. The focus of me being here is for the land that was donated from the Baptist Church in the northwest quadrant of town. The park board has been talking about kind of what to do with that land, and ideally what we'd like to do is create some form of a playground area and also leave a lot of green space, because there is no park in that quadrant of town right now, there's not lots of green space for kids in the apartment buildings and the Moma Home Park and whatnot. And it's a really centralized, perfect location. So as a park board, we started looking at different playground complexes, different options. There was one that we're really interested in, it is on clearance, coincidentally, which is awesome. And additionally, we're interested in one swing set. The total of the cost is, you can see in that packet that I threw at you, it's $26,555. Now, from there, we have been like, okay, that's some money there. Our local Rotary has donated $5,000 to that. I'm here tonight because Rotary would like to apply for a grant in partnership with the park board for a matching $5,000. Additionally, Walt Bowe's family has a donation of $10,000 towards this. Additionally, our VFW would like to, or has said they would like to give $2,000 towards this, and so that, moving that forward, that would be 22,000. And so, I just, more than anything tonight, I'm here to seek your approval, to allow the park board to partner with Rotary to apply for that $5,000 matching grant.
Is that a slam dunk? If you apply, is that a, you know, we're gonna get it?
Um, we have two Rotary Rotarians here, I guess they could speak better than me on it, but I feel like they're feeling confident in it, but I'm not in Rotary, so I don't think I should speak.
You got three, Lou's here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lou, sorry, Lou, sorry, forgot.
Well, I have a long history sitting on the grant management committee within our district, and yes, our club contributes annually to what we call the annual program funds, and periodically, clubs like ours can apply for a $5,000, if we put up 5,000, the district matches that. I think that, I, I think it's, it's, it's very, very positive. And we were able to accept this $10,000 gift, and specifically, the party that was involved there was asking that that be used, you know, in, in this type of a manner, so I, I think it's, it's falling into place. The timeline is, is our committee meets on the 15th of April, where we'll look at a number of different types of grants like these, whether it's in Bemidji or Bismarck or Detroit Lakes. I would likely know that same evening, if our grant was approved. The process then goes to Rotary Foundation, we get usually a notice back around the 15th of May, and then the funding follows shortly after that, as far as our match.
Or we're short, or you're short basically 5,000?
About 5,000. Now, here's another really good thing that we can do and we can continue to work on, is that, once we're awarded that grant, we have two years to accept the funds. So if by all chance we couldn't raise any of those funds, remaining funds, this coming summer, we could do this project one year from now. So we have two years to act on the, or request our match, and then we have one year to complete the project. If we got the funding in place, we could do this, start first of June.
Do we have funds in the liquor store for, for being shared?
Katie has some.
Well, I was just gonna say, additionally, next Tuesday, I'm going to the Dunvilla Lions to kind of pitch this to them also. Kind of hoping Lou might write something great in the paper too, I don't know, that's where, that's, yeah, that's, that's just where we're at. Yeah.
We have not, we have not heard yet from the Oktoberfest committee. Katie did put in an application for funding, so that may be.
But that's, yeah, that's different, but yeah, that was for the sign, yeah, that's, that's for welcome sign.
In the cost estimate, you show $5,700 for installation, and then it talks about the city doing that work.
I, I called and clarified that kind of stuff with him today after school. One thing, just before we get to that, if I could point out, they say the funds are up until March 31st, or this amount, and then there's like a sale that ends, but he, Christopher, the guy I've been working with today after school, confirmed that he would push that for us, because I said, like, the Rotary won't even know till earliest April, if not more, and he said, we can, we can push that for you, because, because we've been, Brian and I have been working with him nonstop at this point. I know that wasn't your question, but I just wanted to highlight that, because that will get extended.
That brings up another question real quickly, if the city chose to, to be able to get that savings cost, purchase this, would that jeopardize their getting?
Very, very good, very good question, good thinking. Until the application is approved, you cannot begin the project, so you can't purchase the project. However, this is what we've done in other communities. Once the funds are matched and we have our funding in place, sometimes that money may not arrive till mid-June, when our district receives funding from Rotary International. Oftentimes, the city will begin the project, they may do exactly what you're doing, purchase the items, and our funding funnels back through the city again. So we do not want to, until we get the application approved, we do not want to purchase any of the equipment.
So, you have to wait for the application to get approved, is that gonna jeopardize that $8,000 savings?
She just.
No, that's what I just addressed with them after school today, and, and they said, no, they would give us an extension on it.
But let's say if we found that the funding, if the funding were to arrive, let's say on the 10th of July, and we wanted to begin this project sooner, in, in some instances, this company maybe has a 30 day, you know, and then payment is due, and in some cases, some cities have stepped forward and helped navigate that. But.
Back to my original question. The 5,700 installation, was that just the value that the city put on the installation? And are they gonna do it, or what is that 5,700?
Um, that was, so the, when, gosh, so when I talked about it today, the first is, yeah, that, that's the cost of the installation.
But who's, who's?
They are.
Because that installation, you said built by other, the city is doing the work?
Um, no, the city's not doing the work, it's another company that they work with, but they bill separately for it. He talked to me about it today, they don't install it, but they have their partner company come and install it, but it's built separately because they're separate companies.
So they're gonna, they're gonna put the pieces together, but the city's gonna be doing the excavation and, you know.
Land prep.
The land prep, yep, but they, the city does not install it, that's a other company. I don't know what that.
The city was gonna do in the prep of it is not this 5,700.
No, no.
Right.
Yep.
So we should not?
We should not?
Talk about liquor store funds at this point?
No.
I move that we give Kate, we go ahead and work with Rotary to file our.
Why don't we want to work, talk about liquor store? Okay, I don't know, that was like, nice.
We'll see what else comes up.
Okay. Like, I didn't.
Hearing none, all in favor, say if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
One final thing for it is Rotary would need a letter of support from the city to move forward with their grant? Oh, okay, the details, I'll get to Brent maybe, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Um, I want to meet with someone Tuesday, they're interested.
I didn't remember, I have a library report, it's in your package. I hardly want to say it, but the meeting was canceled last week, I was hoping they would.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have most of the library packet in your packet, but the things that we met last evening as the library board, and I'll just report on the things that we did last evening that aren't in the minutes, they won't be in our minutes till next month, but it was reported that the Pelican Rapids Library Foundation has funded the library board's request of $9,485 to be used for hoopla, which is a digital access, the Pelican Rapids Press digitization, part of that, and also a technology grant, to provide some online access to the shadows, which are now online, the, all the ones that we have digitized, they're up on the library website, you can do a link, and they're available, and that was part of that technology grant. We had a report that the Friends of the Library reported that the Tablescapes fundraiser will be held on September 10th, 2022, they didn't have it last year, and that's a, that's a big fundraiser for them, and they usually donate the money to the library. Um, so that will happen. Um, the library board hired Jasmine McFarland as the new circulation librarian. It's a part-time position at the rate of 1963 per hour. Um, and I did forward that to Danielle this morning, so she's aware of it. Um, and then we also discussed the ordinance that was passed by this council last meeting, um, on February 22nd, 2022. Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions? Don, is there a motion to approve the library report?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And just in light of time, I know you're pressed for time. I had some other comments to make and I'll make them next time I come. But I just wanted to express, um, for the library board that we were really disappointed in the process that you guys took with that ordinance and not bringing us into that. Um, we're always talking about open communication and there was no communication with that. And, uh, if you're trying to build some open communications, that wasn't a very good way to do it. So that's all I'll say about that. And I have some other comments to make, but I'll make them next time because your time is pretty limited. So.
Item number 10 is resolution 2022 dash 3 with new city of Pelican Rapids, standing in support to develop and implement U.S. bicycle route 20, which is in your packet. Uh, comment?
Yes, that was in the packet. Basically, it's a resolution. You saw the maps that show, they're trying to develop the route for this, this U.S. bicycle route in the 20 and the map shows already through Pelican Rapids coming up 59 to Pelican Rapids and continuing on. And so all the resolution does is say you support that and they're coming to Pelican. Without the resolution showing the support, they might reroute someplace else. Doesn't guarantee that it's gonna get routed that way, but at least it shows that we're in support of them coming to the city. Please say.
Questions, should we, Council?
I know we could, uh, resolution 2022 dash.
Second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. What is it gonna go?
I have no idea.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carried. Item number 11, uh, resolution 2022 dash 03, reestablishing precinct in Holden Place. That was also in the packet. And Danielle, you want to speak to that, please?
I do. Um, because there was redistricting that happened, everybody has to, in the state, has to, um, pass the resolution saying where their precinct is. We do this every December. This is the redistricting happened. We have to do it again. So nothing's changing for the city of Pelican Rapids, which is reestablishing our precinct in Holden Place.
How would we adapt resolution 2022 dash 03 to the same full replacement?
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same, motion carried. Item 12, household hazards waste day, August 3rd, 2022, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Danielle?
Yeah, on the agreement that we approved last meeting, they had a typo and they had typed the eighth, but it was actually supposed to be the third. So I don't have to sign the agreement anymore. I just wanted to let you know that it's actually the third, not the eighth.
Motion to approve? Second? Motion second? Discussion, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same, carry. Item number 13, appointment to interviewing committee. Don?
Yeah. So as I get ready to finish up things on, and hopefully you all for advertising this economic development position, I would ask it to the city council person that also sat on the interviewing committee. And then I will also be at some point bringing others before the council to also sit on this interview committee. There's an elected official that I'd like to sit on. He would be basically somebody that would be a part of all the interviewing process.
Their most scheduled layout at this point, who would that'll be or?
No, I've got, I've got, I've got interviewing questions pretty much done, whether they're the final ones or not. So maybe something that's. I've also got the job description done. What I would like to do is possibly, um, maybe as soon as the next council meeting, have that job description before the city council. So you guys have a chance to review it and understand what it is that I need to do with this position. Um, and I think that would probably be appropriate for the next meeting. I really wanted to do a gift meeting, but 6:00 is our deadline. So, so that, that, that I think is next. I also have a supplemental application information that I need to develop for this position, but I can work on that. It's more a job description I'd like you guys to look at. Um, any comment on that? And then, um, if there's anybody that wants to be on the interview committee.
Yeah, I'm willing.
It really doesn't have to decide if they're eager for it. If you, if you, if you want to do that, that's not a problem.
You're the guy I thought should be on it because you're kind of an entrepreneur and, uh, you've got your hand on more things than the rest of the students. So.
So you were in your motion here, correct? If you want to do that and appoint that person tonight, you can do that other nights when I do these others, so y'all just include the name. I would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that would, uh, Steve Strand be appointed to that interviewing committee.
For a second?
There you go.
Your vote? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14, administrator report.
Yep. So it's the last meeting. We had department head meeting and there was some stuff with staff. Went and worked with the city council to set the agenda for the meeting. I met with the mayor, um, Councilman Foster, people service staff and State Superintendent Brian Olson. We again discussed the graph chloride reduction schedule, the chloride schedule that had to be submitted to the MPCA by the end of February. I then submitted it to the MPCA and I did get a response from them saying, thank you for submitting it. What they're gonna do now is they're going to start putting those items into our, uh, next wastewater plant, MPEAS permit. And, um, then provide us with a copy of that draft 30 days before it goes out, with a 30-day comment period for the public. So as soon as I get that back from them and get something from them, we will also do it again. So then, uh, continue to work on personnel issues. Obviously, Jeff is part of that discussion tonight. I had it compiled, uh, and worked on a bunch of information for our water utility information that goes into a water conservation report. I completely, um, completed all that work and submitted that to the VNR. And then, uh, I did a little bit of, I worked on, you guys approved that trail plan development of a trail plan with, uh, that was proposed from Partnership for Health or whatever. You approved that, well, that means that I need to create an RFP that I could send out to consultants to try and figure out who we're gonna hire to work with us on that. So I worked on that, uh, RFP. And I think I've got up to the point where I could probably send it out. I need to get working on that because that whole plan has to be done by the end of September for that proposal review that you guys approved. Um, then I also met with the subcommittee, the community fund subcommittee, uh, Councilman Foster and Council, or Councilman, uh, Ballard and Councilman Strand. We talked about, um, the, the community fund and also approved those items that need to be approved. And I submitted them or am going to submit them to West Central Initiative. So they got it. I also met with those individuals that are hoping to, um, establishing and get kind of, uh, active again on the EDC. And kind of shared what the council did and the purpose for it. Um, there, there may be a request coming regarding the feasibility study and application for funds, to use funds for that. Might come before the subcommittee, but the EDC is also hoping that, um, they can actually get things in place where they might be able to just open that application themselves and work with you. So. And then, uh, that was the last thing I just attended that meeting with the EDC. So.
Any questions for Don? Thank you, Don. Item number 50, mayor report. Uh, there were a few items in the last, uh, couple of weeks. Uh, conducted a conversation with the mayor at historic city hall on the 23rd of February. Tenna chloride reduction meeting here at city hall with Councilman Foster, Administrator Solda, Superintendent Olson and Terry Gamble and, uh, Greg Stang from People Service. And Don put together a memo that he sent to MPCAs and, you know, the communication going back on the chloride reduction here in Pelican Rapids. Worked at the Pelican Rapids booth at the Red River Valley Holden Garden Show at the Fungoville on Sunday, uh, February 26th, 7th. Uh, it was kind of slow day that day, the busy day. I was there with a, a Saturday before, but there was good, good reviews of the, our booth. And it's surprising how many people have relatives that live in LA or have lived here themselves or have stopped here and shop or buy gasoline or go fishing here. So it was a well, well sound of venue. And then I also met the, yesterday, or excuse me, today with Administrator Solda to review the agenda for this afternoon's council meeting. Questions? Item number 17, is there a motion to adjourn? So we have a motion second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same? Meeting adjourned.